Call a meeting to order. Welcome to a special board meeting in the Nevada area district board of directors, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, on the Plan for Water workshop. And with that, we will go ahead and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. If you call normal, please.
Division one? Here. Division two?
Here.
Division three? Here. Division four?
Here.
Division five?
Here.
Okay. Looks like we're going to have another oath of office. Yay. Did you get certified?
I don't want to call you Mr. Calder. I'm not quite sure who that is.
Where does this turn it go?
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Trevor Calder, do solemnly swear.
I, Trevor Calder, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon what?
Which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the law. All right, you're all good. Thank you so much.
Yay. Welcome, Trevor. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Appreciate it. Look forward to supporting all the constituents as well.
All right, and since this is a workshop format, I'll reiterate the process here. This is an informal meeting. They'll just jump into the conversation anytime we want to. There'll be no formal recognition until we have a board meeting. And with that, we will not be asking for public comment. So the same with the public. If you want to chime in, we'll try to watch the screen. You'll watch it on your own. Raise your hand and start on your phone to talk. And we'll go with that format today. And as usual, as we've been doing, our general manager, Jennifer Hansen, will be facilitating our meeting today. And it looks like we're going to move from strategic plan to Plan for Water, uh, stage five, uh, stage six basis for Plan for Water. After we just look at the matrix. I can't talk. Okay, with that, Jennifer.
Thank you, President Beerwagen. Since President Beerwagen just stated, we are very informal. If members of the public would like to talk, either just flag me down. The only reason I'll ask you to go to podium is so that the microphone picks your comments up. Other than that, our footprints at home, you can utilize the chat function in Zoom, and I will read and answer your question. Or you can also start, um, raise your hand via Zoom, either using your computer or using... And what is the phone raising hand?
A star nine.
Star nine. And both options. And please don't feel like you have to wait until we're asking for a comment. You can participate at any time. So this is really informal. As we've been moving along the Plan for Water, you could provide comments verbally. You could provide them in writing. You could provide them through the chat. You could email us. There's a lot of different ways to participate, and all are welcome. And just a couple of housekeeping notes. There are snacks for anybody who'd like one. Um, the bathrooms are out in the hallway. And then we have also been continuing to update our website with comments and response. Comments we've received and responses that we give out related to those comments. Those are all on the website. The Plan for Water section of the website has a ton of information. We do try to keep it updated. If you notice we're missing anything, just reach out and we'll get that address as soon as possible. So looking at the matrix, we last left off with strategic planning. And it's probably about ninety percent complete. We had gone through strategic priorities and then started looking at goal setting. So we are going to continue to refine those goals internally as staff, and then we'll be packaging up the whole package and bringing it back. So it's expected we will bring back the final strategic planning document for one last look and discussion in the January timeframe. So look forward to that. The only other matrix change is really related to... When we originally laid out the matrix, we thought we would do everything kind of, you know, in a linear fashion. So we are currently on stage six, which is the basis for the Plan for Water. And this is really to obtain input on how and how we should use the plan. How long should the plan be valid for? What should be the planning horizons? We're going to walk through several of those topics today. And the idea is to try to reach some general consensus between the public and with the board related to how the plan will come alive, live, and continue to be updated. It is expected to be a dynamic document and will be updated frequently, or at least should be, especially with the modeling. One of the items we had originally thought is we would touch on hydrology and hydrography first and then move into demand. But we are finding that it is necessary to, because of the heavy lists related to demand, we are going to start focusing on some of the demand assumptions at the next Plan for Water meeting, which will be in January, instead of jumping right into hydrology and hydrography. It just makes more sense from a logical perspective on how that works actually then. So I did want to note that small change.
So we're going to flip six and, uh, seven and eight?
Yeah, we're going to kind of flip seven and eight. We're going to start eight, get going on eight, and then start working on nine. They'll kind of run a little bit concurrently. Um, but they're not going to, it's not going to be linear. We're not going to finish one and move to the other. Is that correct, Dave?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And we had already brought, you know, that informational item about the additional work that the West consultant team is going to do, right, with regards to that. See, might be six and that type of thing. So, so we're kind of jumping around because all these pieces take time. They're working in the background, trying to develop all these. But if we just stick to one first and then go to the next, it's going to stretch out our schedule quite a bit. So this way, we want to be able to move around a little bit to be able to keep them going, to be able to get a product that we can all get to.
Does anybody have any questions regarding these changes or what the plan is moving forward? No? Okay. Board members? So this next item, I don't anticipate it taking very long. But if it takes longer than one meeting, we can do that, too. We are always open to taking as much time as we need to work through any of the issues. The presentation we have prepared is extremely brief because the topics are impactful topics, but they are brief to discuss. But like I said, we can take as much time to talk about each one of them as we want. And we also have our consultants here, so feel free to jump in and save us whenever we need saving. And as I say earlier, this is informal, so please jump in and participate in any way you want. And I'll make sure to watch the chat function as well. So we call this the basis for the Plan for Water, and this will likely be the shortest stage we've had and probably the shortest meeting we've had. So might be a nice little break right before the holidays. So brief agenda, I already touched on a lot of it. Planning horizon determination, frequency of the update, use of the plan, responsibility for the plan, and facts and assumptions. These are often items that people in our positions don't actually ever discuss. And what I have found happens when you don't discuss them and agree upon them is that the plan isn't intended to be used as, it's not used as it's intended to be. And then it's not ever updated. It becomes one of those shelf plans that no one ever looks at again. And so that's not the point of this exercise. So we really want to have really good data that comes out of this that will then tier in to our master planning, which will feed into our capital planning, which will feed into our annual budgeting process and how we do our operations. So I do think it's important that we have these discussions so we all have some general sense of agreement on them. So the planning horizon, a planning horizon, depending on the document, it varies wildly. And it is essentially the length of time in which we're going to be forward-looking. So there's a couple of rules of thumb regarding the planning horizon. The longer your planning horizon, the more likely your assumptions in the outer years can be false. And we've seen that with what's going on right now. Some of the technology advances, the understanding of climate change, just climate change in general, that has all been at a rapid, progressing at a rapid pace. So if we were taking this, doing this exercise fifty years ago, our fifty-year outlook in those last ten years, we've probably been really, really wrong. If you take too short of a planning period, it doesn't allow for systematic planning of infrastructure improvements or even operational improvements that costs money and you have to plan for. Large infrastructure projects are notoriously very expensive, and you need to plan for them. Likewise, so are investments into the watershed, investments into replacement of treated water systems, change, long-term changes in operations. So too short of a period doesn't really allow for the data to be developed that will help substantiate making any long-term adjustments or having a long-term impact. So there's some pros and cons to both of them. Long-term, our assumptions might not be correct in the outer years. Too short-term, we're not going to be doing the planning we need for even the ten, twenty, thirty-year period. And so we need to have a discussion about what seems right for NID. Oh. The battery's broke. Oh, you got it. Like I said, infrastructure projects can be very costly, whether that's just a general replacement or even if it's a large infrastructure project. And we need to understand, save those in advance so we don't have those big wild swings in rates. And, you know, with, with rate setting, your ratepayers are not going to be very happy if you're having huge swings year to year in their rates. So you do want to have some smoothing of rates over your five-year rate term and then over a ten-year outlook. And, but to do that and to do it well, we need to have an understanding of what we're doing in those outer years. We have, having a planning horizon, that is kind of that sweet spot does create rate certainty. And then how quickly is the environment changing? Are we, are we really sure we know what we know in the twenty to fifty-year period? Probably not. Can we address that through some policy considerations? Yes, we can. And then how well do we understand the data that we currently have? Those are all things we need to take into consideration. So other plans, we have had a lot of conversation with how the Plan for Water will interact with other plans. We have a lot of different types of plans that NID and all water agencies do. As the board knows, we have the Urban Water Management Plan. We have the Ag Water Management Plan. Those are all required by state statute, and those have a twenty-year planning horizon. The Integrated Water Resources Management Plan has its own planning horizon. And we have raw water master plans, treated water master plans. There are a number of different watershed-type plans. And then all of this is fed or based off of future water demand projections or based off of basically land use. NID is not a land use agency. We do not determine land use. That is determined by the various land use agencies. So in, in the case of the county, it would be the county's general plan. In the case of Grass Valley, Nevada City, it's their own general plan. So they are dictating how long and what their long-term land use planning is, which identifies land use specifically by zone and by parcel, but also assigns densities to it. General plans can have a variety of planning horizons as well. You see some as long as fifty years. You see some that are much less. Some in our area were last updated in the eighties, and they do little tweaks to them once in a while. Some were in the early two thousands, and they'll update a component of it. So one of the challenges we were having is that it's not likely that we can develop a planning horizon for the Plan for Water that fits in perfectly with all these other plans because their planning horizons are so different.
Jen, may I ask, I thought that urban water and the ag water management plans, we had to redo every five years.
We do, but they take a twenty-year outlook.
Oh, they take a twenty-year outlook, okay.
Yeah, so you do redo them every five years, but your planning horizon for that plan is twenty years. So a couple of planning horizon options. We could go short-term, ten years. Um, I'm not a huge proponent of a ten-year planning horizon. I don't think it provides a good basis for any long-term financial planning, which we definitely need to do. But it would have the most accurate assumptions. You know, we do have the most, biggest handle on data for just a ten-year looking-forward period. One of the other cons I've seen with real short-term plans is a lot of times they don't really get off the ground, so you cannot see how well they're working in a really short timeframe. Because remember, we're going to do the Plan for Water, and then we'll tier into these master plans. And we really need to see how the master plans are functioning before, you know, we go throw it all out and redo it again. So that would be one consideration for the short-term planning horizon. Mid-range would be kind of that twenty-year, twenty-five-year period. It would be better suited for financial planning, but we would have some less accurate assumptions. And then long-term is fifty years, which is definitely the least accurate assumptions, but it is the best well-suited for financial planning. From a staff's perspective, we lean towards a long-term, fifty-year planning horizon with a very strong commitment to updating it on a five-year basis. I think that will allow us to check our assumptions, update modeling, update whether our future assumptions were correct or not and adjust them as needed, but also feed more and more accurate data as we collect it into the model, which will just become more and more accurate. So I'm going to stop here and see if anybody has any input on the planning horizon options. All right.
Good afternoon. So I'm involved with the Calhoun Cities on the RTMS, which is the regional, litigating the regional transportation plan. So, and I've been involved for, you know, quite a few years. We say, built a model five years ago, and it's a twenty- or twenty-five-year horizon plan. And the model is interactive, so the development occurs, they feed in all of that information. So, so now we're at the five-year, and I'm involved in, you know, looking at, you know, how, how that model is working. And, you know, there were some flaws in it they were able to update it. And the traffic patterns have actually have changed quite a bit in five years from what the assumptions were. So the twenty, twenty-five year seems to work really well. Of course, I'm involved because of the fees and, you know, how it affects development. So, you know, and part of what you're doing is financial. So from my perspective, the twenty, twenty-five year works really well.
You know how far back they look when they do the updates? You said you like it five years now. I imagine when, when they built the model, they looked back so many years. Then every so many years forward, we should be looking back and, and testing against what our assumptions were.
Five years, yeah, I've been involved with the RTMS for probably twenty years, and they had one model that wasn't very, you know, very good. And so five years ago, they actually developed the model. So they put in the real-time information, right, what they knew already. And, you know, it's a really nice model. It's going to be a lot like the hydrology model that you guys are going to do. And as things change, you feed it and, you know, and then you verify the information in five years. So that's kind of how they did it, which I, which I assume NID would feed in what they know right now and then project what they think it's going to happen.
David?
Hi, this is Dave Curtis from West Consultants. Just want to make clear that if you run the plan out for fifty years, you still get the twenty-year results and the ten-year results, the same level of accuracy that you would if you only did ten or you only did twenty. So you kind of, you get the full range. So you get the intermediate results.
That is a very valid point.
And so then what is the advantage? I mean, I saw that that's well-suited for financial planning in fifty years. To me, that's actually so far out that, you know, no one can predict, are we going to have rampant inflation, recession, all that stuff, and how that will change? You know, is there an advantage to fifty-year other than financial planning?
Well, I think one of the things we talk about in previous workshops, previous meetings, is kind of bookending, you know, kind of conceiving the range because you can test the sensitivity of the models, vary a couple of parameters and see how it varies fifty years out. And I don't think anybody here would be, have a ton of confidence in anything fifty years out. But the results can be informative. And it might shade your decision-making about some of the long-term decisions that you have to make better than not doing it at all.
Because remember, some large infrastructure projects, even if you're talking about transportation, that could be a twenty-five, thirty-year project, right? And so at, you need to have some sense of what's way out there on the horizon. What's on the mid, what's coming before us in ten years? What's in that mid-range, and then what's way out there? Because that will definitely inform your decision-making on how, we want to smooth rates, make sure we have enough water, and plan for any long-term infrastructure projects.
I'm interested, Jen, because you came from Calhoun, and you talk about long-term infrastructure projects. What was their planning horizon when they did it? Do you know?
I, well, Barbara was bringing up the RTP. I think it's actually fifty years, but they do five-year updates. What is the regional transportation plan? I, I think it is longer term. But the data is a wag, right? So the assumptions you make at the end of the term are wag, but they're updated more frequently. Your plan is only as good as you update it. If you don't update the plan, it doesn't matter. But to what Dave said, which is a very valid statement, you're still getting the ten and twenty even in a fifty-year lookout. I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we didn't take a long-term look.
And I think also you use that information like for the climate, right?
Uh-huh.
To predict how far to see where we're going. In five years, we can see if, are we starting to turn toward what we're actually seeing fifty years out? If I could, right?
Yeah, and traffic's a little bit different. And your baseline scenario is usually based off of your last actual traffic counts. So it's just a little bit different than trying to predict weather and climate conditions looking out.
Hey, Chris?
Oh, Rich? Rich has a question.
I feel like Ricky in Indiana.
You don't look like her, though.
Yeah, you know, we don't look alike.
They, uh, no, I favor the fifty-year primarily because for the financial planning. I think it's, it's critical that we plan that far out because we have projects that could go that far. And like David said, we're also going to get to ten and twenty. I, least accurate assumptions. Yeah. Making assumptions are, there's a, there's a common phrase for that. But I think fifty years, you get a better trend on what is actually happening with nature. Like when David and his crew went back to eleven hundred years of tree-rig. That, I think I just find that significant. And to see the trend on, on water. And I thought we're purchasing this, uh, this other model that can be updated on the fly. So I think go fifty years for financial planning, cover that aspect of it. And then the model should take care of the water situation.
So remember, I think those are really good comments, Rich. The, when we tier into the master planning, we're probably not going to master plan actual projects for a fifty-year basis, right? We'll look at something shorter term at that point. But we do want to know what our needs are moving out over that term. Now, if the board were to indicate that you did not want to update the model every five years, I don't know what the point in being going out fifty years would be. But I also wouldn't professionally recommend we spend that much money on a model and not update it.
Right. So what would be the time horizons for the master plans?
We'd have to think about it because I want them to roll into the capital plans, probably twenty years.
Okay.
And also, we don't necessarily want to go any shorter than five years.
Uh-uh.
There's splits in our, on how things happen, right? Like COVID, for example. If you were trying to plan based on what's going on a year and a half ago, it would be totally different. So five years seems to allow you to get through some of those potential up and down wags that, that would really skew your, your document board if you were to try to plan it out. So five years seems to make the most sense for us.
All of these plans should be sliding with us through time. You know, we have this fifty-year outlook with the Plan for Water. We take a twenty-year, more project-specific outlook with the master plans. And then we have a five-year capital program, and then we have annual capital. As we move through time, those have to be sliding and updating with us to provide the most accurate information.
And with each other.
We have a question from Peter Burns, which I think is really good. I might rely on Dave and Jeff to help me with this. Can or will the model output show or express the level of uncertainty of a given output or timeframe? Isn't that what somewhat of the sensitivity analysis does?
Yes, that's what it's, that's what that's for.
So it will, but the sensitivity analysis is also based off of assumption. Right. Okay.
Are you looking for specific feedback from the board on this question?
Mm-hmm, the board and the public. The board, the public to the board.
I, I, it's not to throw a monkey wrench. I, I definitely go towards longer-term planning. I think especially since the master plans are a twenty-year time horizon, it certainly makes sense. And I like the idea of the leveling of the rates and being able to forecast the needs for investment in future decades. The level of uncertainty is the question in my mind and how relevant it is. And I'm wondering if maybe a thirty or thirty-five-year time horizon might make more sense since fifty is so sketchy. That pulling it back a little bit might give you a little bit more, you're dealing with a little less ambiguity in the long-term horizon. Because it's a long-term, what we define it to be?
Right. I, you, I think with the technology advances, that the same level of uncertainty probably exists in fifty as it does in thirty.
There's a level of uncertainty.
Yeah, because there's so many technology advances in, in understanding climate change. There's so many data, more and more data is being collected right now. And now there's artificial intelligence that can mine that data and start fixing its own model as it goes. And the same thing is going to happen within thirty years. So for me, that's the big wild card. So I don't know that it's all that different.
Then I, I would just support.
I agree.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're doing anything by pulling back to thirty-five.
I don't think so either. I, like I stated earlier, I think it would be highly problematic to do any type of planning with not having a real commitment to updating it.
Sure.
Well, I'm going to say, I, you know, I want to, we have these very professional, very top-rate consultants who are, I'm sitting here saying, and they're saying, fifty years is what we ought to do. And so I tend to want to follow the advice of these professionals, and I, too, would support the fifty.
Yeah, I do, too, along with the idea that we're going to do five-year updates.
Yes.
I think that makes it both a long-term and a short-term. It makes a hybrid out of the whole deal.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, I support that whole argument.
Yeah, and I would agree that fifty years, the, the right horizon. Although I would like to see more focus on a set of knobs that would be adjusted sooner than five years. And there's enough things, you know, population densities, rainfall, you know, these sorts of things that we're collecting on an ongoing basis that should be fed into this model pretty easily, that we could get incremental upgrade, updates yearly that I wouldn't think would be very expensive.
No, and I think the model is built for that as long as we have somebody on staff who knows how to use it. I think some of the, the longer-term updating is basically shuffling the master planning and everything based off of the new outputs.
That you wouldn't want to really do. But I think some of the projections that the model should be working on, there should be a set of knobs that, that we can update at least yearly.
Precipitation data, new connections.
Yeah, those sorts of things.
Because one of the big things that drives demand is essentially new, any new connections. And you often see a huge argument over the absorption rate of any new connection, whether it be raw water service in a soft service area or homes being built somewhere. You get some pretty wild fluctuations in what people view the future to look like. And I think that's one of the most important things to update, too, so you actually could check that assumption because that will really swing your numbers either way.
Yeah, I'd like to see something around agriculture as well. We're seeing, you know, rate growth, at least in Placer County, and I assume in Nevada County this, the past two years. So we should be tracking that and seeing what the needs are.
And I think part, as we move forward with this, part of this discussion related to the sensitivity part is we're going to be discussing all the assumptions and the inputs and what's going into them. And we'll start to get a better feel how and what's going into them, and you'll start to get a better feel how, how big of a difference it makes when you adjust the population based on the population data that we get from over finance. Right? That may be relatively small or may not be as important to do on a regular basis versus some of the other information that might be. So as we move forward in the process, I think we'll all have a better understanding of the most important pieces that we need to maybe potentially look at as we move forward. It may very well be part of one piece of all of those, but some of those are going to be, some of those are going to be less effective overall in terms of our demand numbers than others.
Okay. Jennifer, what's your vision as to where this sits and why, and the responsibility for getting the inputs and the updates done? I mean, I'm looking at this as like a ten-year or twenty-year horizon. Probably nobody in this room will be around.
Hey!
No, I mean, I guess you're not sitting there doing what we need to do.
Hey, hey, hey!
Well, that's the point. It's like how, where would this live within the NID structure and what positions would be responsible for this?
It would be water operations. That's why I just looked over at Tor with a knowing smile.
Ah, Tor. How many years you going to be here?
Tor and I are just about the same age too, so.
Okay. Well, but you.
We got it for the next fifteen years. After that, I don't know.
Lasting aside, you can see, you know, this needs to live someplace and have a responsibility and a position and other folks feed into their data, you know, your engineering and so on.
Yeah.
If it doesn't live on the shelf, whose job description does it live in?
Right.
Well, we'll work out those details. It will likely live in water operations because ideally we would meld it with our reservoir operation model.
Yeah, that makes sense, too. I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, because also we can use this model in the future as we continue to develop it. Be able to better give us understandings on how we should be operating it on a year-to-year basis. We can use this information for our normal year-to-year operation type stuff, just based on the information.
Oh, good question. So am I hearing, and Rich, are you, your consensus at fifty years? A thumbs up. So we're consensus at fifty. Okay.
Yep.
The frequency of the update, we've talked about this a lot. I one hundred percent agree that is, as data comes in on an annual basis, we should be updating it. Minimum every five years, we need to run the whole model and see if any of our projections at the end have changed to confirm whether or not we need to update our master plans. Because if you don't start, if you don't update those frequently, it will cause some major issues with your capital programs and your financial planning for capital because you want to, you really want to have an understanding from a financial basis what your five-year capital needs are, what your ten-year capital needs are, so that you could build those into all of your rates and your planning.
So what do you envision for how heavy a lift that is and the timeframe involved in an update?
It depends on how much the update feeds into the master planning. Once you get good at it and you're doing things on a routine basis, updates, you know, the modeling update shouldn't take all that long to do. It's not going to be as long of a process as we are now. To update the master plans, it really just depends on the magnitude of the update.
Yeah, I think that's going to be the driver. If there's a substantial change in the information, that could really require us to go back and do a bunch of work on the master plans. If we're adjusting the flow in Canal A from two and a half feet to three, probably not make a big difference in terms of sizing and our infrastructure improvement, depending on how big that update does to a whole.
And to Trevor's point, it seems like, you know, Trevor, I agree, you know, as we get our, our precept data at the end, you know, for each year and, you know, the snow depths and the, and the water content in the snow, all those sorts of things, that those should be inputted every year as we get those. Do you not?
Yeah, well, it's here, so I guess.
Oh, it is?
We just need to wait one more slide.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever information we could update annually should be updated annually.
Okay. Chris?
Western Hydrology, I'm part of the West team, and basically spearheading the water model that you've been discussing. And I want to, I want to maybe explain the difference between a annual forecast model and a planning model. With the forecasting, that, that's Tor, you know, in his, his bailiwick, he's probably doing an annual forecast about operations, and he's taking that information that you're talking about, the snow water content, the precipitation, the downstream demands, and he's, he's forming a plan every year to, to make those deliveries with the water supply that he's anticipating. That's very different than the model we're putting together. And so what we're looking at is we're, we're developing a, a future-level hydrology, future-level demands, and we're looking at what, you know, can your existing system meet those in the future? And of course, our forecasts are going to be wrong, but they're useful in, in that the best information that, that's available to us, we're using to, to build this model. And so we're looking out far into the future. He's looking at more real-time or, or very near future with his operations. And so when you have this data that you want to update the model with as it comes in, that's more what Tor is doing. We can use that data as we develop the update every five years or so, but, but that's different. He's, he's doing an operations model, we're doing a planning model. Now, our model that we're building can be converted to an operations model that, that Tor and his, and Doug can use, and it'll be probably a little bit more automated. I can imagine that data's flowing a little better in the future. It can be piped right into the model, and we can do a, an annual forecast with it and that will help Tor. Even Tor will want to update that every month because we have snowstorms coming in, the sweet changes, and he's going to want to update that as he goes through, through the winter months, probably about June or July. He won't really rely on that so much because we have the water supply that we're going to get for the rest of the year. He'll start it up again probably in January the following year. But it's very different. I just wanted.
That's the melding of the model I referenced.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Director Dryson?
Yeah, am I, yeah, good. I'd like to just introduce in the modeling, if we could look at increasing the irrigation season from six months to eight months and see how that affects our demand. A lot of farmers, ranchers are asking for it, and I'd just like to see what happens, if that could be included.
That could be one of the bookend scenarios, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think so, Rich. I don't think that's difficult.
Rich, are you suggesting the same amount of water stretched over a longer period of time or an increased amount of water?
Well, I think that's the question. I think it's probably going, especially in the fall, it's going to increase the amount of water demand. But that's where, that's, that's where we need the irrigation, that's where we need to keep the, our crops going and the pastures irrigated, and that's where we need the fire protection as the, you know, as the other benefit.
We are hearing some feedback, we're hearing from the agricultural community, specifically the ranchers, is that with it becoming hotter earlier and staying dry longer, that they're at risk of losing some of their pastures in those fall months before the rains come.
They are losing.
The question I haven't been able to answer is, let's say you were taking it over six months and a certain amount of water that you, you use. Is, is the answer to deliver the same amount of water for eight months or an increased another two months of that, that same delivery?
No, I, it would be, it would be increased, but it's not a one-to-one increase because the temperature, the days are shorter, the temperatures are cooler, and then once the soil is wet, it doesn't require as much to wet it. So I don't think it's kind of this one-to-one. So we'd have to work out the assumptions on how to even project that.
We also have it related to, you know, everybody else is still using their water a lot, that's throughout the summer, but so we're going to have that demand, we're still going to have to have water in the canals to be able to meet those demands versus spreading them out, keeping the same amount of water, you'd have to be somehow turning them off or rotating them so that they didn't take.
Right, I would definitely see it as additional water.
Yeah, I think that.
Based on the guys' workplace. And we've talked about this, not so much in the spring, but the fall is particularly more troublesome, but it depends, it's going to be so seasonal. I mean, I don't think.
And it's crop-dependent.
What?
It's crop-dependent.
It's crop.
She depends on that.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not needed everywhere in the entire system.
No.
It may get, I mean, as we've talked about before, it's very complicated.
It, it.
Unless we run it everywhere.
Well, and it gets even more complicated when, you know, we had, what was it, 2021, when we had the really dry year and water infiltrated so much more than normal, we just had so much less runoff. That same condition exists in the canals. So this year, how early did you have to start wetting the canals?
We're fortunate, we had some.
We had that rain, that's right.
In the April, which allowed us to conserve storage. But if we don't, we find that we have to go to full loads very early instead of a gradual increase.
Because we lose so much water in the canals. So, you know, some of these uncertainties that we're talking about also speak to kind of doing these updates, working towards melding the operation model, the planning model at some point. And as technology gets better and better, the models will become smarter and smarter. So are, do we all agree to five-year updates? Full updates?
Yes.
And it may not tier into completely updating the master plans, but a minimum of every five years, they should be looked at. And sometimes they're just reaffirmed. The use of the Plan for Water, basis for master planning, basis for five-year and annual CIP, data can be utilized for the urban water management plan and the ag water management plan updates as a basis for it. It can inform our long-term financial planning, and then it can ultimately, it'll start to inform operations, but it'll really start to inform operations when we do what Jeff referenced, is melding those operational models with it, which is kind of phase two. The responsibility for the plan, I think this is important to have just a very brief discussion about it, and that is related to, oh, Marco chimed in. Okay, so Marco wanted to add, and it is a good point, the model handles the demand requirements from a physically-based perspective and land use such as crop types. So that will be good moving forward because as that changes, we would then be able to update that. The responsibility for the plan, if everybody's not built or committed to how we use the plan and how we update the plan, then it's not going to happen, and it will become a plan that sits on the shelf and never gets taken off until or required updated again. And that is very similar to what happens with the integrated regional water management plan. No one uses those plans in any agency. Even the ag and urban water management plans, we don't really use them.
Checking boxes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So we do want to make sure we're updating this on every five-year basis, and to do that, we need to have some responsibility for it. So how does this responsibility look? I think it's important we're all agree upon what that looks like.
Looks like to me a policy because we are, we are in favor of doing this, we're committed to doing this, that we put it in writing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree. I think it should be a board policy.
It then would be, it would impact further staff down the road when all of us aren't here.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have any input?
I thought I was being so smart. That's right.
That's right. She thinks of everything.
She does.
Dave?
One of the things with any sort of plan is, you know, it's updated every five years, it needs to be, it needs to be looked at often. So to kind of address your point made earlier, that it might even be part of the policy that maybe Doug has come to the board kind of with a little quick annual update.
Mm-hmm.
Versus the plan.
Very good.
Yeah, I like that idea, and include that in the policy because that's how we'll be checking our assumptions.
Hi, Gus Hall, I'm with Geological Associates and also a resident of Chris Drew Reagan District. Yeah, so there's a very similar framework that is currently in place that the state put in for managing groundwater in Central Valley, a Sigma, Sigma Ground Management Act. So it's a, right now forty-year planning horizon, but then that's when you have to reach sustainability, and then it's indefinite after that. And so they have five-year annual updates that are required as well as annual reports. So very similar to what you were talking about. There's, we're still working through it, but it seems to be an effective timeline. You're constantly thinking about it. The annual reports are mostly, you know, about a twenty-five to thirty-page report. That's just sort of summarizing conditions that happened over the last year, and there's certain requirements that are in there, and most of those are just figures showing, you know, contour maps and spring and fall. So it doesn't have to be a whole lot of effort, but it is good to have these annual updates and just so, you know, oh yeah, in six months, we have to, are delivering this, we should start thinking about this now. So just wanted to underscore that, the effective timing schedule.
Yeah, that's a very valid point. We have a question from Peter Van Zant. Will a five-year update require consultants? Likely, but not to the extent or cost that we're paying for the original model. But at some point in the future, oftentimes models go defunct, and if we don't do a good job of updating them, you do end up doing a wholesale update, you know, maybe in twenty-five, thirty years. Who knows? I've never seen an actual model that lasts for more than twenty years. Why is it that the ag water management plan is not used? It's just not, the ag water management plan is a state-required document, and it doesn't really interlay with how we actually operate, so we don't really use it.
Isn't it mostly a reporting document?
Yeah.
As opposed to a planning document?
Kind of.
That's kind of how I remember.
Yeah.
And the planning document is, the planning part is based on the previous years, right?
Right.
So it's taking the last data and then interpolating that out twenty years on what that's going to be.
Yeah, you just apply percentages year over year.
Yeah, so I kind of recall that it was more, it wasn't so much a planning document, it was a reporting document to this day.
Okay, Otis?
Hi, I was from Bear River, resident. I wanted to just bring to you something that began to help in last January when you were looking at drought management and possible stage four, stage five reductions. And that's a proactive NID drought policy for agricultural waters. And basically what this is, is a way of identifying commercial agriculture and then essentially making very specific arrangements with commercial agriculture, to engage in a relationship where conservation is invested in, and the paradigm has shifted from a block of water to actually measuring needs and delivering water to meet the needs rather than estimating. You know, this shifts the micro inch paradigm. And we've talked about that in your Plan for Water, you have a demand section coming up, you know, in the ag water management plan last time, the comments were all made, you know, you're not really measuring the water delivered on the side.
Right.
So you, we've got to start moving to that, to that paradigm. In, in putting this together, there's a criteria for what an agricultural exemption would look like, a Schedule F, et cetera. There's a vision for what this would be, what, what the responsibility of the NID would be, what's the value proposition near-term with your customers, what's the value proposition long-term, what are your fundamental interests? And I've got some notes on this. I brought ten copies. You're not out of the woods for stage four, stage five this year. We're still at record low soil moisture levels. You may have to do something early in the year, and hopefully this can catalyze some thinking. I did bring this to the attention of Director Hall, and we were able to talk about this for about an hour. Director Hall will be in contact with Joe Fisher. I ran, I had about a two-hour discussion about this with Joe Fisher. He found it interesting. I was motivated to put this together because this is where the environmental movement and the agricultural interests meet. Ran this by Circle Management, a number of the Circle Board members. Ran this by colleagues at PCWA, ran it by friends in the Bear River. This is where you can go and get agreement with very divergent interests, very divergent interests. So I'll leave this with you and, and while I'm leaving, enjoy.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Congratulations to you and to the rest of the board. Yeah, look forward to this year plan.
And I think.
And I think you brought some good points, and it's important to remember that as part of our demand analysis that we'll do, it will include various stages depending on your types too. So our drought contingency plan will be incorporated into that overall as well, our assumption of, it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be, again, you know, your best guess, right? If we have drought floor that says you need fifty percent reduction, what we can put in there, we assume fifty percent reduction in demand, not necessarily exactly fifty percent, but that will be part of that process when we look at the bookends and what this continuing is gonna look like when we get into these diverse stages of the wet year versus dry year type stuff.
Okay, so I think, I heard consensus on a board policy.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get that together.
And within the board policy, there should be some mandate to, on these updates that we've all kind of been talking about.
Some sort of annual.
Annual reporting.
Report out.
You know, as, as our consultants have kind of outlined.
I think it's a good idea. I think that, um, it keeps everybody accountable and keeps it in the forefront of your mind to do it. Not a bad idea. So we have, through this process, been hearing a lot of concern, mostly from the NGOs, but some from other constituents as well, related to kind of assumptions that are going to be made and whether those are gonna be daylighted. So I just wanted to touch very briefly on it, we're not gonna have a whole lot to say about it at this time. So assumptions are things that are not, you know, they're model implicit, are not necessarily a fact, like it, we got X inches of precipitation in 2021. Okay, that's something we could tell you. Assumptions on what's gonna happen in future years are not fact, right? They're projections. And so as we go through those, that's when we're really gonna be starting talking about the bookend. So there has been some push, you know, there's, there's two sides of every coin, right? Some people are concerned we're gonna overstate our demands, and then some people are concerned we're going to understate our demands. And so the, the whole plan is to bring forth the bookends, and then where we plan for in the middle of those assumptions is, you know, a policy decision that the board makes. So I did want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we view that are some of the assumptions that will be being made, and we're gonna talk about them and daylight them. And that's why we are kind of switching some of the stages around so we can bring demand forward earlier. So the physical processes such as how much runoff we get, how much runoff we're gonna continue to get, climate variability, future demand is a huge assumption. And, you know, it's funny, when you do, whether you're doing a traffic model, a sewer model, water model, and I think as Jeff made the comment, our forecasts are gonna be wrong at some, on some level, they're always, no one's perfect.
They're always wrong.
They are, whether you're doing revenue forecasts or expenditure forecast, you're always wrong. It's how, how, or what side of, into the coin do you want to be a rock on?
What COVID thing came and hit, it knocked you over.
Right. No one, so when we do this, we're gonna talk about it, and then we're gonna come up with what we think are reasonable bookends. We're not gonna try to be extremists on either side. And then ultimately, you'll kind of get a worst-case and a best-case scenario for demand, which will help you go into your planning, and then that's kind of where the board decides what level of risk you want to take. You know, how conservative you want to be on your demand numbers is really a question of risk ultimately. You know, no one wants, no one obviously wants to run out of water, but to what extreme do you go to, to make sure that doesn't happen? And so some of the assumptions we'll be talking about, future demand, that's a huge one, like I stated, that's always a big lever that can really monkey with the model. Operating criteria, there's a lot that gets thrown at us every day. We have fork flows, we have voluntary agreement flows, we could have other settlement flows, there are still other settlements related to some of our other water rights hanging out there that could impact future demands. Those are all somewhat, they're somewhat defined, but somewhat unknown on when they're going to hit. That's gonna be a big assumption we have to make. Our reservoir conditions, you know, how fast are, are they gonna fill in with sediment, how much water is gonna make it to them, those are all things we're gonna have to work through. And then our storage management, how are we managing our storage to where we have surplus, or when, you know, when and what years we think we're going to be spilling, how does that look? So those are all assumptions that we're gonna have to be tackling as we move through this.
I'm getting a little bit philosophical about the terminology of an assumption. It conjures up if there's, if there's concern about that with some people, that, that assumption means we're just pulling a number out of air, right?
No, it's an affirmed, it's a formed.
Well, that's, okay, but it says versus fact, okay? So to me, we're gonna make assumptions based on facts, right?
Right, facts are something that's already happened, that we have a finite number for.
To me, it doesn't really sound like, like we're assuming this. We have data, like we could, we have some graphs right now. We have a reservoir graph, and we have a demand graph. When we look at that, it's more factual to me than it is assuming something, okay? Except assuming where the graph is gonna go. So I'm a little, you know, a little bit fuzzy about the word assumption going in.
Assumption is a projection.
Yeah, I think the, the idea with this whole process is that we're gonna identify those areas where we are making a educated guess of what we think is gonna happen. Then ultimately, the board is gonna decide based on input from staff, from the public, et cetera, as to where we lie, right? For an example, soft service area on our canals, there's multiple assumptions just within that one piece. Okay, so will we assume two, two thousand feet from a canal is all we go? Do we assume based on some topography or geology what it, and then what's the absorption rate within that? So you identify these areas, and then how fast are those actually gonna occur? Those are all pieces, and our, our goal is to inform everybody as to all the different pieces and how they go into it, but ultimately, in poll forty people, and they're all gonna give you a specific, a different number. No one is right, and no one is wrong, but ultimately, we just try to give you the best information for then you guys to make your decisions on.
And does anyone have any questions or comments? Tracy, do you have any input? I know this is an important one to you.
Uh, yeah, no, everything you're saying is great.
Okay.
Okay, and bringing this forward now.
And we, we'll also try to show, and we've been working with those that are more, kind of in the weeds of modeling on the side, so that they can specifically start understanding, you know, when we pull the levers on the model, so it's not the secret black box, no one understands how it works, even though some of it does get a little bit complicated on the back end. We're working with them on the side so we can show them exactly what the inputs on the model do to the model.
Yeah, I think that's the goal, right?
That's our goal.
Not to sit down and have two or three meetings to discuss specifically how that data rolls through the black box, or the picture, what are the information in there, and how by adjusting those, the output changes.
Mr. Burns states, "The quality of an assumption informs the level of uncertainty of the result based on the assumption." That is correct. That was our summary with the basis for the Plan for Water. So I am taking away fifty-year planning horizon, twenty-year master planning, five-year updates, board policy, and we'll be daylighting the assumptions.
And annual updates.
Annual report outs.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we'll put that into a board policy and bring it back.
Great.
I know this is a short meeting, but it was designed to be short so it could be long if it needed to be. Anybody have any other questions? Otis?
Yeah, this perhaps, this perhaps more in the, in the realm of public comment, but it is quite relevant for where you're headed. I just made copies of, this is the, this is the, the brief that we submitted to the administrative hearing officer at the State Board, and what we're saying is more content, it's less content-oriented than it is process-oriented. And the, the process suggestion we're saying is that, let's get this thing done. And the reason is, and it's profiled in here, is that the, as a result of the river fire, kind of the paradigm has shifted in the way we're looking at managing lands. And, and there's a map in here which, which shows really how much lands that you required in this 2014 and on effort for preparing for the possibility of a centennial dam, you required about fifteen hundred acres. And as a result of the river fire, the paradigm has shifted. Everyone in that canyon is now looking at massive ecosystem fire management. That goes from fuel reduction on through to introducing prescribed burning. That's really the only way that we can actually protect and keep safe the I-8 corridor and all the towns from Auburn to Meta Vista to the Gulf Axon up to Dutch Flat. That's the only way that we're gonna be able to essentially live safely in that area. And what does that mean? If you look at Zeke Lunder, a forester who runs the, the website, The Lookout, has become a very informative daily reporting and mapping of fire during fire season. If you look at his reporting, that's where, he's the go-to mapping for what's happening on the fires. He was excellent in the Forest Hill Fire this last year. So, so we're all thinking about that kind of management. And Zeke says, "That's gonna cost you about a thousand dollars an acre for at least ten years, per acre, thousand dollars per acre." So management of those lands, I want twenty acres, I can tell you, I'm doing at least a thousand dollars an acre over the last six years, and it will be for the next five easily. You know, you have to. My fire insurance went from eight hundred to forty-five hundred. That was done post Paradise Fire. Paradise Fire happened today, the fire is out there, is California. It's a small pool of people who are covering each other because private sector insurance has given up on us. Next Paradise Fire, I could be paying twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, for insurance, because we're self-insured. I'm in the pool of self-insured. So at that stage, that, you know, as you, this is a, this is an elephant in the room, people, because you're looking at a budget, you're not like fifteen hundred acres. If you're gonna be responsible neighbors to what we are doing in the Bear River to protect ourselves, you can count on a million or a million and a half bucks a year in management of those lands if you do not build it down. So it's damned if you do, damned if you don't, that's the world we live in, it's kind of the way it is. In here is profiled, we took a walk up your lands on Dog Bar that you acquired just a couple of years ago, and there's a couple pictures that show a private landowner above the canal who's done excellent work with the water, and is ready to get to prescribed burning. That's the level he's at. The other side of the canal is the NID property, and it's utterly fueled. What he has done is negated by what NID has not done. Fire started, canyon poured up, it would torch right into the canopy and go straight to the house, even though he's done excellent man of fifteen feet down, a middle and, and lower canopy.
Otis, I'm gonna suggest you meet with Greg Jones offline, because it doesn't sound like you're aware of what we are doing out there.
I know you've done a lot of good work in Parker, in the Parker property.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you've got some really good grant that you got post-fire for the Hanson property. And so I would say if you were probably looking at what you're not budgeting for is the other thousand acres, a thousand acre for the next ten years. Anyway, that's the issue, it's arising, it's arising underneath us, it's something we haven't focused on, haven't realized, until really the river fire brought it into focus for us as a community. And we can't do it without NID. You guys own a lot of land there. So shown a lot of sensitivity, gotten a lot of good grants, manager, or is sensitive to it, you've got good watershed staff, you're sensitive to it, just it's bigger than what we saw.
Well, let's talk about it offline, because we are here for the Plan for Water, so I don't want to totally steer the meeting away, but Greg and I can prepare an email that outlines what we are doing.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Plan for Water, I mean, just the fire issue, if you look at Plan for Water, you're planning for growth.
Mm-hmm.
I would look at Paradise. Paradise has a very different trajectory for growth than they had five years ago. The conditions, Grass Valley and Nevada City, according to Zeke Lunder, are virtually identical to the fuel loading east and southwest of town for either western or eastern winds. For Grass Valley and Nevada City, it could be that because of fire, our trajectory in growth changes overnight. So there's also associated issues that are arising, we just need to be aware of these things.
The good news is we included a lot of this in our strategic planning, but I don't think that you were there when we did that.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody else have a question?
Yeah, Jennifer?
Comment. Oh, yep, sorry, I have the comment box over your face. There we go. I see you now.
That's probably a good move. So I, Otis, I, I like the fact that you're supporting all the efforts that the farmers and ranchers of Placer and Nevada County have done for decades, if not generations. In farming and ranching, those lands are now fire-safe and at no cost to the community. And I just want to say that, that continues when they have, when we have water. And if we don't have water, then the fire danger goes up. So I just wanted to, you know, commend you for recognizing the, the issue, that proper management of land is critical, and water is a critical part of that management.
All right, does anybody have anything else before we move on? I think that then that is it, so we will see everybody back in the January timeframe. You wanna?
Or tomorrow, or tomorrow.
Or tomorrow at our regular board meeting. You wanna adjourn?